Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Gault.
Present.
Commissioner Kayler.
Present.
Commissioner Watkins.
Present.
Mayor Paxton.
Present. Again, we have Megan Holland from Grace Episcopal Church here to give her invocation. Megan, welcome and good to have you with us.
Thank you.
And maybe have Commissioner Abraham do the pledge of allegiance afterwards. Will you stand please?
Please stand. Let us pray. O Lord, our governor, bless the leaders of our land that we may be a people at peace among ourselves and a blessing to other nations of the earth. Lord, keep this nation under your care. To the president and members of the cabinet, to governors of states, mayors of cities, and to all in administrative authority, grant wisdom and grace in the exercise of their duties. Give grace to your servants, O Lord. To senators and representatives and those who make our laws in states, cities, and towns, give courage, wisdom, and foresight to provide for the needs of all our people and to fulfill our obligations to the community of nations. Give grace to your servants, O Lord. To the judges and officers of our courts, give understanding and integrity that human rights may be safeguarded and justice served. Give grace to your servants, O Lord. And finally, teach our people to rely on your strength and to accept their responsibilities to their fellow citizens, that they may elect trustworthy leaders and make wise decisions for the well-being of our society, that we may serve you faithfully in our generation and honor your holy name. For yours is the kingdom, O Lord, and you are exalted as head above all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes.
Okay, any additions or deletions, Mr. C. Major?
Four B.
Four D? B.
B.
B, okay. Yeah, four B is being removed from the agenda. It will come back before you at a subsequent meeting.
Okay. All right, we have a few presentations to make. We have pancreatic cancer awareness. Who is receiving that award? Okay, you want to come up to the podium? We know what a terrible disease this is and it is my honor to read this proclamation. To all to whom these presents shall come, whereas in 2012, an estimated 43,920 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States and 37,390 will die from the disease. 530 of those deaths will occur in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers and is the fourth-leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States, it is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 6 percent. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer presents themselves, it is usually too late for an optimistic prognosis. And 74 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. And whereas the federal government invests significantly less money in pancreatic cancer research than it does in any of the other cancer killers, and pancreatic cancer research constitutes only approximately 2 percent of the National Cancer Institute federal research funding, a figure far too low given the severity of the disease, its mortality rate, and how little is known about how to arrest it. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in Paducah, Kentucky, support those patients currently battling this cancer and are committed to nothing less than a cure. Now therefore, I William F. Paxton, Mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim the month of 2012 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Signed, W. F. Paxton, Mayor. So it's my honor to present this to you. We have two proclamations. Is that correct?
Yes.
Are you expecting two?
Yes.
Okay, so from the city commissions, our honor to present that to you.
Thank you, sir.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. First off, Mayor Paxton, commissioners, I want to say thank you for helping us in the fight. Sadly, at this stage, pancreatic cancer is not known and used until someone is diagnosed with it. I want to say it's kind of humbling to stand behind this podium because I've watched on many occasions on Channel 11 as my brother Joel stood behind this podium and shared information with you about the inspection department. And sadly, that was my first and major experience with pancreatic cancer was his diagnosis. We are working hard here on the local level but also on the federal level to try to increase the funding, but we want to make it here in Western Kentucky where it's known, we want to raise awareness and this proclamation helps with that. You're going to see the City of Paducah turn purple in November because November is Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Western Baptists and Lurds have both graciously agreed to turn their lights purple for that month to bring awareness to this disease that as the proclamation said, the survival rate hasn't changed in the 40 years since President Nixon declared war on cancer. It has remained unchanged at 6 percent. And so we are working hard, we, the local affiliates on behalf of Carol Forman, our community rep, and the volunteers, and all of us are here because we've been touched by this disease. We all have an experience and it's a bad experience. There's just, there's no, there's no good experience ever with cancer, but with pancreatic cancer, when it's diagnosed, it usually is too late. There are some clinical trials that offer hope, but outside of that, there's not a lot of hope. And so that's what we want to do. We want to raise hope, we want to raise awareness, and we hopefully do want to find a cure for this. So we thank the commission for this proclamation.
Well, you're welcome. And we thought awful lot of your brother, as you know, Joel Scarborough, and so he would be honored to know that you're working so hard for this important area. So, thank you.
And he loved the City of Paducah and he loved his job. In fact, after the doctor diagnosed him, that was one of the first questions he asked was about working. And the doctor assured him that most people, when they're going through treatments, can still work because he loved his job and what he done for the city and for the citizens of Paducah.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck to you. While we're reading proclamations, we will read another one in regard to National Business Women's Week. To all to whom these presents shall come, whereas working women constitute 72 million or almost half of the nation's workforce, and strive to serve their communities, their state, and their nation in professional, civic, and cultural capacities. And whereas women-owned businesses account for 30 percent of all U.S. business, generating 1.9 trillion in sales and employing 9.2 million people. And whereas working women should be applauded for their contribution to the workplace and the financial stability of their families, especially during the economic downturn, when more women have become their family's breadwinner. And whereas the major goal of Business and Professional Women's Foundation is to promote equity for all women and to help create better conditions for working women through the study and advocacy of social, educational, and economic issues impacting women in the workplace. And whereas since 1928, the National Business Women's Week has honored the contributions of working women and employers who support working women and their families. Now therefore, be it resolved that I William F. Paxton, Mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim the week of October 27th, excuse me, 22nd through 26th, 2012, as National Business Women's Week. In Paducah, and I urge all citizens, business community, organizations to join this salute to encourage and promote the celebration of the achievement of all working women. So, pretty impressive and I think we all need to be reminded of this, right?
Yes, thank you so much.
So again, it is the privilege of this commission to present this proclamation to you and we would love for you to say a few words.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor Paxton, commissioners, we thank you so much for this proclamation. The third week of October since 1928 has been set aside to honor and to highlight working women and employers who support working women and their families. Business and Professional Women's Foundation celebrates this each year, and we thank you, Mayor, and the commissioners for always supporting us in our efforts to highlight this event and highlight the efforts of working women. We have here today from the Paducah Business and Professional Women's Club, our president, Rhonda Lovelace. We have a past president and our 2011 Woman of the Year, Maryman Kemp. And I am the immediate past president, current vice president, and your 2012 Kentucky Woman of the Year for the state. We want to thank you for your support. We had a reception just a week or so ago, and we want to thank you for honoring us with one of your commissioners, Ms. Gault coming, and also the award that the city presented at that time. We strive as a club to continue to highlight the efforts to promote working women, entrepreneurs, and anything that will promote women and families. As it says in the proclamation, women have been the breadwinners sometimes, and women contribute greatly to our great nation. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. All right, moving right along, Mark Thompson, you here? You playing a role in this? Mary Lynn, okay, Mary Lynn. It's got your name in here. Okay, Mary, good to have you with us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Paxton and the commissioners for having us here this evening. My name is Mary Lynn Thompson. I am the president of the Paducah Civic Beautification Board. Tonight, I am presenting our annual business awards. Our board selects businesses that have enhanced the visual appearance of their property every year. This year, we have honored five businesses. Our first one goes to Metro Market. I think this was everybody on our board's favorite business. The transformation was outstanding. Andy Carlos, thank you. The next one we have is Bluegrass Dermatology. This is a new construction, and we chose this because not only is their building beautiful, but they have outstanding landscaping, over and above what most businesses can do. So that is Dr. Doug Wilson. And I don't know if anybody is here, oh, Russ is here. Russ Carrico is here to accept the award. The next one we have is, it's a joint award. It's Shandys and Artisan Kitchen. Both properties have been transformed and they both really look nice, and yet they have still maintained the character of their buildings. They did a great job. David Jones and Carla Lawrence. Oh, good. The next one we have is Chipwind Motors. If you've driven by there, they have this beautiful fountain, and it really stands out on Park Avenue, which is hard to do, and that's really why we picked them. They just do a great job. Thank you. Chipwind Motors. I don't know if he got to come here tonight, so I'll give this to him.
He's busy selling cars.
And our last award, we gave to Paducah Power System. This property is always well-maintained, and it is really a beautiful addition to our city. If you drive by there in the summer on the Kentucky Avenue side, there's crepe myrtles all the way down. They really do a good job. It's very pretty. Andrea Underwood could not make it this evening, so, but I wanted to thank them for all they do. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andy, thank you for your contribution. You make Paducah a lot better place. And thank all the recipients and appreciate the hard work. And Mary Lynn, appreciate your hard work on this. Thank you very much. It had M. Thompson. I thought it was Mark Thompson. All right, we have Paducah Chamber here, Elaine and John Cooper. Welcome to our meeting.
I'll go first. I don't think he needs any introduction to this group, but thank you, Mayor, and city commission, and our city manager for inviting the Paducah Area Chamber of Commerce to come and explain a little bit more about how we work together as a community to advocate both at the federal and state level. John Cooper has been working with this community for 16 years and has done a great job representing us, and I'm going to let him talk a little bit about what he's been working on and some of the challenges ahead for the community. So, John?
John, good to have you with us.
Thank you, Mayor Paxton, distinguished members of the Paducah City Commission. Over 16 years ago, I started working with the Paducah Area Chamber on a number of projects. The first project we did was the two-plus-two engineering project at West Kentucky Community Technical College. Then it was called PCC. Later on, we worked in two different budget cycles with the state on the Luther Carson Center. And I was down at Paducah P&amp;L Railroad Building today. I got my first tour through that facility, and I noticed how that whole center has opened up that end of the community and crowds down there, and I look at all those buildings along the river and what progress the city has made. We also worked on the Emerging Technology Center at West Kentucky. On the federal level, we've worked with Central Air Service, Barclay Regional Airport. We have worked on a number of federal projects. We've worked for 15, 16 years on issues related to the Paducah Gaseous Diffusion Plant. We go all the way back to the Avalos Program many, many years ago, a technology that was being touted at that time, which never actually took off. We faced probably some of the toughest challenges we faced over the next few years in the transition of the community based on what happens with the Paducah Gaseous Diffusion Plant. A lot of activity we expect in the next two years. We hope to be able to take the good contacts that this community's made and the good relationships this community's made, both on the state and federal level, and use them over the next couple of years as we deal and try to address this issue. And I've always been proud to represent Paducah. I always thought this was a community and a region that primarily worked together. They showed us that in the two-plus-two program many years ago, and you're still doing it today. As I said, I've been very proud to represent you. We have a lot of challenges in the future, particularly in the next couple of years with this transition. A lot of unanswered questions, a lot of things we're working on. We had a meeting this afternoon, and we're working on issues surrounding the plant, and we're going to have to get started very quickly. As soon as the general election is over with, then Congress will go back in for its lame duck session. It's going to be a very important session, but we'll start then, and we'll be working up through early next year on some immediate issues that surround the plant. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions. If not, I just appreciate more than you know the opportunity to appear before you.
Yeah, any questions for John?
I'd just like to thank you for your hard work and the great job you do, John, representing this community, and Elaine likewise, and we're progressive because of it, and we have a lot of things that we wouldn't have had otherwise, and so we appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. I appreciate it.
Anybody else? John, John has worked hard, and for the last 12 years as mayor, I've worked with John in the chamber, and we have gotten a lot of things done and worked on a lot of other things that we're still working on. So, John, I appreciate your support of the city and hopefully we will continue in that working relationship, so.
Thank you very much. Kind of become a second home.
Okay.
Thank you a lot.
Thank you, John.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Elaine. Okay. Does that get it on the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that a reading of the minutes for October 16, 2012, city commission meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second.
Okay, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Mr. Gault?
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Certificates of insurance, Danny Copen's sons, Ivett Plumbing Contractors, Inc., certificate of insurance and right-of-way bond, Brian Wamboldt Construction, Inc., City of Paducah Fountain Avenue, Neighborhood Homebuyer Project, Environmental Assessment and Environmental Review Record dated October 8, 2012, Paducah McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency, Paducah, Kentucky Financial Statements with Independent Auditors Report, years ended June 30, 2012 and 2011, Proposal, Planning Department, Proposal for Revolving Line of Credit, First National Bank, Inc., Paducah Bank, Independence Bank, Community Financial Services Bank, and Banterah Bank.
Second.
Okay, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Okay, municipal orders, Commissioner Kayler?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order amending the pay grade schedule for FY 2012, 2013 for the City of Paducah employees by establishing a pay grade for public works compost supervisor in the Engineering Public Works Department be adopted.
Second.
Okay, Cindy?
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Commission. Periodically throughout the year, we bring for your consideration a pay grade schedule and position and pay table. These next couple of actions are those two documents. The first one, the only change to the pay grade schedule is the insertion of a...
Okay, any question? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Of a public work supervisor for compost, and in general, that would be intended to give us more operational flexibility in the compost yard and also share some supervisory with the solid waste division of Engineering Public Works.
Okay, any questions for Cindy? Great, good deal. All right, thank you. Please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order amending Sections F Police Department, G Fire Department, and H Engineering Public Works Department of the fiscal year 2012, 2013, position and pay schedule for the full-time employees of the City of Paducah, Kentucky be adopted.
Second.
Okay. This cleans up and it satisfies our fire and police step increases that are necessary by contract. It also reduces by one an equipment operator in the Engineering Public Works Department would also add, would move that headcount over to the right-of-way position, again with operational flexibility. And then it adds the fire marshal position that we received a grant for that was approved and accepted by the commission earlier this year.
Okay, any questions on that? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham?
Upon the recommendation of the city managing the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
These are just maneuverings that we need to do by contract in acting positions for the most part.
Okay, thank you. If there are no questions, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Commissioner Gault?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order establishing a policy for use of spending credits toward the purchase of certain benefits such as health, dental, or vision pursuant to the city's group health insurance plan for the 2013 plan year be adopted.
Second.
Okay, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Ordinances and adoptions, Commissioner Kayler?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Paducah and Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute an agreement between the City of Paducah and Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield as the city's third-party administrator to provide claims administrative services related to the city's health insurance plan. The effective date of this agreement is January 1, 2013, and ending December 31, 2013.
Second.
Okay, we heard an elaborate presentation by Cindy and Greg, and so anything you want to add at this particular time?
I have nothing new.
Any questions for Cindy? All right, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt the ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the rates for stop-loss insurance coverage from Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for the group health insurance plan for the City of Paducah, Kentucky for the 2013 calendar year, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same, and amended on October 16, 2012. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah accepts the rates offered through Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for stop-loss insurance coverage for the group health insurance plan for the City of Paducah, Kentucky. Effective January 1, 2013, the stop-loss rates are as follows. Individual stop loss, $150,000 maximum city liability per person with a monthly cost of $51.66 per member, and aggregate stop loss of $3,249,249.01 maximum city liability of total claims combined with a monthly cost of $5.34 per member. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for the stop-loss coverage.
Second. Second.
Cindy, you wanna comment?
No.
Pretty self-explanatory. Okay, any questions for Cindy? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Kahler?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Ordinances and introductions, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving the Revolving Line of Credit from Banterah Bank, and the principal amount not to exceed $900,000, authorizing the mayor to execute a revolving line of credit agreement and other loan documents relating thereto, and authorizing a designated agent to draw funds from the revolving line of credit, all of which is necessary to finance a portion of the city's proposed construction costs in the Fountain Avenue Neighborhood Revitalization Project." This ordinance is summarized as follows: By this ordinance, the City of Paducah, Kentucky authorizes and approves a revolving line of credit from Banterah Bank, and the principal amount not to exceed $900,000, for a term of eighteen months, with interest thereon at the fixed rate of 2.95 percent, subject to commercially reasonable terms and conditions. The funds drawn from the revolving line of credit shall be utilized to finance a portion of the city's construction costs incurred in the furtherance of its commitment to construct seven new structures within a Fountain Avenue neighborhood. Further, the city authorizes and directs the Finance Director of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, to request and effectuate draws upon the revolving line of credit as deemed necessary by the City Planning Department to satisfy construction costs incurred by the city in the furtherance of its commitments.
Second.
Okay, Steve?
This is the final step in the construction of our latest grant. It's for seven homes. After we get these seven done, and the three NSPs, there will be thirty new homes built in Fountain Avenue. So, we already have three pre-qualified buyers, I mean, they're already bank-approved. We've already received the bids, so upon approval, when this happens, we'll be starting construction here within the next few months. And I think you also got a map that shows the actual location of these next seven homes.
You wanna talk about the award that was given to the city?
Yes, on Saturday, a partnership between the Paducah Police Department, Midtown Alliance, and the City Paducah Planning Department received the MetLife Award. It's an award that was given to just a handful of communities across the nation. There was actually six hundred applicants, and it was for community policing in partnership and revitalization. It was a very nice award. A young lady from New York City flew in and presented us the award on Saturday at the Fountain Avenue Fall Festival.
Any questions for Steve?
No, but I just wanted to say, the Fountain Avenue Festival turned out very well, was very well-attended, and Commissioner Gault and I walked together and viewed some of the homes.
Very nice.
Some of them were new, some of them were older ones that had been redone, so it was a very nice event.
I think we went through nine hundred hot dogs in about ninety minutes, so.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Well, Steve, you're doing a good job, you really are, and this is something that we can be proud of. It's similar to Lower Town Neighborhood and what's going on there, and so, I commend you for your hard work on this.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, that was an introduction, so Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting a 2012 Community Police Partnership Neighborhood Revitalization Award in Partnership with Midtown Alliance of Neighbors from the MetLife Foundation and the Local Initiative Support Corporation, L.I.S.C., for the Paducah Police Department." This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the City of Paducah, in partnership with Midtown Alliance of Neighbors, hereby accepts a 2012 MetLife Foundation Community Police Partnership Neighborhood Revitalization Award in the amount of $20,000 to be used by the Paducah Police Department for community policing in the Fountain Avenue neighborhood. A local match is not required.
Second.
Okay, Chief?
Well, this is the grant, just to piggyback on what Steve said, this particular grant is $20,000, non-match, and it will continue our collaboration and partnership with the Midtown Alliance and Fountain Avenue area. We're gonna designate those funds. Number one, we wanna hire a part-time community liaison that will work through the Boys and Girls Clubs, Police Department, and the community-designated workers to work with at-risk kids and to keep them off the streets and getting into trouble. So, very excited about that. It's only part-time, but it'll give us an insight as to what's going on in the streets with our kids. In addition to that, we recognize that the Margaret Hanks after-school program does not have any computers, so we wanna buy some computers for Margaret Hanks, so that the kids can do homework or whatever at Margaret Hanks. So, we're gonna buy some computers for them. In addition to that, we wanna send a couple officers to CPAD Training in Louisville. And CPAD Training is crime prevention and community policing training, so they can work together in the community, in the neighborhoods, to further reduce crime. Also, we're gonna take that grant, and we wanna buy a radar trailer. One of the main problems in Paducah is accidents, whether it's in the Fountain Avenue area or whether or not it's in the mall area. So, wanna buy a trailer to put the radar on, so we can deal with the traffic problems that we have. So, very, very happy. Like Steve said, it was over six hundred communities in the country, even cities like LA, and Paducah got one of those awards, so very, very excited about that.
Yeah. It just means, Chief, that the whole city has to jump in when you get an award like this. The Fire Department, the Police Department, Public Works, putting in curbs, gutters, sidewalks. It takes the entire city to make something like this happen.
And it does, and that collaboration, once again, shows that we have the best directors in the city, of all the four cities I worked in. We have the best directors that I ever worked with, and all of us working together to make this a better city.
Yeah. Well, I think you hear that come from this body often, about what a quality group of department heads we have, but something else for somebody that's worked in several communities around the country to say that, so appreciate those comments.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Just thank you, Chief, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Kahler?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting a Grant Award from Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railway BNSF Foundation for Providing a Youth Police Academy Sponsored by the Paducah Police Department." This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the City of Paducah hereby accepts a grant award in the amount of $2,500 from Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad BNSF Foundation to assist the Paducah Police Department in providing a youth police academy twice a year to area youths aged thirteen to seventeen. This award does not require any local matching funds.
Second.
Okay, any comments you wanna make on this, Chief?
Just to say, once again, we're excited about this. This past year, we started a youth academy with children. We have the Citizens Police Academy involving adults. We decided to go a step further and work with the youth. Not only did it provide a foundation to hire young folks as police officers in Paducah later on, hopefully, but also that we recognize that if you wanna reduce crime in a community, do it on a proactive basis with programs such as this. So, twice a year, the kids are gonna come in, and they're gonna, we go through different programs with them, letting them understand who we are, what we're about, and formulating partnerships with those young people. And we just started this year, and it was such a home run that the kids were begging to do it again. The kids didn't wanna go home, because they were so happy to be in the Police Department. So, very excited about this grant, and as I say all the time, you wanna reduce crime, work with children proactively, not reactively.
Right, good point. Any questions for the chief?
How do kids apply for this?
Once we put it out, we just put out the advertisements, we probably use PAM to help us again. They can apply, and we started looking over the applications. In fact, we didn't have enough room, and we actually had to turn away some kids, because we just couldn't accommodate everybody. It was just the first time we were doing it, didn't know how much money it was gonna cost, anything, but it was a home run.
Is there a certain criteria that the kids have to meet?
Just young folks that are interested in being there. Some of them, of course, are interested in law enforcement, and also, it's working in conjunction with us trying to start the Police Explorer Program again, which is children from fourteen to eighteen. So, this was just a prelude to development of the Explorer Program, which will be starting this fall. So, as long as they're showing interest, they wanna be there with us, we'll take them in.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. I'd like to ask Chief Kyle to come up for a minute. Don't worry, Chief, not a trick. At the Kentucky League of Cities Convention, Paducah won the Runner-Up Award, 2012 Enterprise Cities Award Runner-Up. City of Paducah for the Juvenile Fire Setter Intervention Program has received the distinction of Kentucky League of Cities Enterprise City Award Runner-Up this twelfth day of October 2012. Chief, you wanna talk about what went on in order for us to receive this award?
Well, just a little background on it, and this goes along with what Chief Barry was saying just a moment ago there, trying to be proactive in our community with a program like this, to intervene with kids that we're having trouble with in the community, and educate them, make them feel like a part of something, and that's what this program's about. And really, I would give more credit to PAM in this. She has been very instrumental in helping us move our program forward, get the word out there, and help us apply for grants and things along that line, and I just wanted to say in front of you, I really appreciate her help with that. So, I think this is the fruit of some of that effort, and if I recall, it was a $250 award that went with it, is that right?
You know what, I don't have that.
Disappeared.
They didn't trust me.
You hang on to that, Mayor?
So, but we'll track that down.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the good work. Okay, Mr. City Major?
We will have a brief executive session tonight. Just to kinda follow up with what the chief said, and I think I've maybe been in one or two more cities than he has. I certainly agree with his sentiments. One thing that really impresses me about the organization is the dedication to an increased use and application of technology. We have an excellent IT department, best I've ever worked with, without question. One thing that we're working on in conjunction with the IT department is something called a citizen input system for the Internet, where citizens can make inquiries, complaints, ask questions of any city department through the net if they choose to do that, and of course, with an increasing percentage of the citizenry becoming comfortable with that or using it primarily, we think we need to be responsive to that need. And when I asked the department to take a look around, see what was out there, knowing there were some products out there, 'cause I've worked with them, when I was asked to come back and visit with them, rather than showing a shelf product, they showed me what they developed internally. And the important part of that is that they incorporated our GIS database system into that, so that the program becomes even more powerful in terms of illustrating locations and the ability to incorporate data in there that can be shared with their overall database. Lot of other technology upgrades going on in various departments. Finance Office, the Fire Prevention Department continues to put in place applications out in the field to make their services more efficient, more responsive to the public, as well as the ability to retrieve data more quickly and more effectively. HR Director Cindy Bedford and I today spent a couple hours looking at a automated system for performance appraisal that's out there, so that's the opportunity to look at technology, not only to make our system quicker, but also to make it much more effective. So, you know, the two E words are alive and well in the organization, effectiveness and efficiency, and I think that's a mark of a professional organization that is comprised of professional people from the top to the bottom. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner comments? I believe we have a Bob Kelly here. Bob, come on up. Did you wanna make some remarks?
Yes, it is time.
It is time. Need to make it quick, 'cause we've got a lot on the agenda in the executive session, but...
I understand. I appreciate having the opportunity to come and share with you. I'm gonna take the liberty, I made some copies of the notes that I'm gonna cover tonight, and so that way, if we don't get through it, or you wanna refer to it back, you can do that, so if you just pass those around. And let me first say that I do appreciate the opportunity to come and share our concerns on the South Side concerning the Tent Resource Center, and I appreciate those who came in support of what we're trying to change concerning this. Also wanna make sure, even though I use the phrase "Tent City," I'm keenly aware of the difference between Tent City and Tent City Resource Center. I just use them interchangeably, because when it's all said and done, they really do fit together anyway. And I know that you folks passed a homeless shelter ordinance, and it really covers the issues concerning the city, but we think, from the South Side, that there was a definite omission, and that is where it should be located. I think these kinds of programs should not be in a residential area, and if that was in the ordinance, we wouldn't be here today talking about this particular issue. And I've been pretty involved in politics, following the commissioner races and mayors and everything else, and I know in all of those conversations, it's listening and wanting to be sensitive to the community, and we certainly appreciate that. And I wanna present, again, I've got five copies for the commissioners and the mayor that, and I have not counted them, to be honest with you, but there's roughly 250 signatures that we gathered, basically in the South Side, in the area in which we live, sharing their concerns and opposition of this being located there. I think also, we're keenly aware that most people that are involved in Tent City are individuals who, for a number of reasons, but have not passed drug tests, alcohol tests, things like that, that River City Mission or Lifeline or them have all guidelines that they have to go by, and these folks haven't followed those. And there are a number of programs that are there to help, called addiction recovery programs, and there are a number of them around, and they don't choose to go that direction. And the old saying is, "You can only help people who want help," is a true statement, and they're not reaching out to get that help. I'm very sensitive to this. My father was an alcoholic, my brother was an alcoholic, and so it hits very close to home. And the truth is, I was an alcoholic until I got saved, and the Lord changed my life, and I thank the Lord for that. So, I'm very sensitive to the aspect of alcoholism and what takes place there, and so I'm familiar with those issues, and because of that familiarity, causes some of these concerns that I have. 'Cause the truth is, if a person is drunk or strung out on drugs, it doesn't really matter what time the ministry is open, they're gonna show up there all kinds of days and hours, and since the majority of them don't have transportation, most of them don't have jobs, they'll end up riding their bikes or walking through our neighborhoods at all hours of the night, which, again, will create problems. In fact, when the announcement was first made by the Paducah Sun, it's the first time I heard about it, was in the Paducah Sun, and then within a day or two, it was on WPSD, that it was gonna be in our neighborhood. It really caused us a lot of concern, and we have seen, and we have several folks here in the neighborhood who would all attest that there's, even though it hasn't even truly opened yet, there's already an increase in people walking and coming through the neighborhood who are not from our neighborhood, and they're going there. For example, this week, I saw an individual going right down the middle of the street with a grocery cart with all kinds of stuff falling off of it, and they were picking it up and going wherever. I've lived in that neighborhood fifteen years and never... I've lived in that neighborhood fifteen years and never seen anything like that until this has happened. And so consequently, I believe it's going to be a real issue in that area. Yesterday in the Paducah Sun, it was talked about, and it was told that, you know, there's even more people who are wanting need and wanting help and all those things. So consequently, it's just only going to explode as this unfolds. Common sense tells you that if an addict doesn't have a job, there aren't many ways he can fund his addiction. And we have a number of widow ladies in our neighborhood, we have a number of senior citizens, we have a number of single parents, and they're going to be hit the hardest versus some of the rest of us. We also have a large number of children in our neighborhood. In fact, the very corner that that is located is a place where the school bus picks up children. You think about it, if you're there at that corner, and you have children there, and you have folks that are drunk, strung out on drugs or whatever, what you're doing is you're teaching the kids that's the normal way of life. And I know myself, I got involved in alcohol as a teenager because I wanted to be a grownup. And that's what these kids are going to think about as they go through it. And so I really think it's setting a wrong precedent of what we're doing in that particular area. Another area that I...
We need to keep it, move on here.
I'm trying, I'm trying. Well, if you've got it, you can read some of these points yourself. I'll be glad to explain any of them that you want me to explain. But I've been told, well, they can be there because it's a church. I've started a church, so I know what it takes to start a church. And I can tell you that just because it's meeting in a building that used to be a church doesn't make it a church. Just because it's a ministry doesn't make it a ministry. You can have a ministry in any way, shape, or form. In fact, the requirements on the IRS, a church's tax-exempt status is totally different than any other nonprofits program. But even if that was going to be a church, there's no parking there, and we certainly had to have enough parking for our church, and so I'm not sure how that's going to work. I've also just wondered, and it's in here, and I won't spend a lot of time on it, but a number of people have shared that they truly believe that the City of Paducah has basically turned its back on the South Side. And they will say that this would never be allowed in Lower Town, it would never be allowed in Fountain Avenue, it would never be allowed in West End, it would not be allowed in anywhere other than probably on the South Side, and that's where it's located. And I think that's a, I think if you have not been in that area, I would encourage you to go there. Whether you go down Clement Street, Farley Place, Yizer Street, or any street around there, you're going to find that there are a number of homes that have been remodeled, and it's a much better neighborhood than what you might think. So what we're really asking you to do is to consider changing the ordinance or adding a statement in the ordinance that a homeless shelter cannot be in a residential area. And obviously, it's already been approved, and they've already spent money and et cetera on that particular location. So I think the city should help them in the finances that they've spent there and help them to relocate in another place. There's plenty of empty buildings in non-residential areas, and I think we need to look to try to find someplace where we can do that.
Thank you, Bob. Of course, we're a country of laws, and we're a city of laws, and we have to follow the laws and follow the ordinances that have been passed. To just tell about a few facts is that the church was built in nineteen twenty, and it has been a church since that time. Tent City Mission currently owns the building. The church building will not be a homeless shelter, the building will be used for various activities that help the homeless get on their feet. Interview skills, social security assistance, resume writing, housing assistance, and others. Tent City Mission will have a regular Sunday service. Any person can attend that service, homeless or not. Church building is located in a B1 zone. A church is principally permitted use of land in this zone and has been since nineteen twenty. Rupa applies as it protects religious assemblies. No government shall impose or implement a land use regulation that unreasonably limits religious assemblies. Tent City Mission will have outreach that is central to their ministry and will also have a regular Sunday service. Steve Irvin, our manager, has said that Tent City Mission is protected under that ruling and Paducah zoning ordinance. So I think, Bob, this is a situation where legally it is correct. Our zoning department has said it is legal. Steve, would you like to come up and add anything to what I've said? Steve is our planning and zoning director?
Yes, yes. The only other comment that I would make is that if Michelle Thomas, which is with the Tent City Mission, requests in the future for it to become a homeless shelter, there would have to be a public hearing be held. And that public hearing, first of all, would go to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission would make a recommendation to the Board of Adjustment. At that time, there would be a public hearing where notification would be put in the newspaper, and also adjacent property owners would be notified for that actual application for a homeless shelter. At this point, that has not happened, and it's my understanding that is not what she plans on doing at that location.
And what she is doing is acceptable under the planning and zoning ordinance.
The B1 is a convenience and service zone. She's wanting a ministry at that location, and she will have other types of services. That's correct.
Any questions for Steve on that? By the commissioners?
I mean, I would like to say that, Mr. Kelly, I have been to the South Side several times. As a matter of fact, my niece lives on Hayes Avenue. So, you know, I'm very aware of some of the problems on the South Side, and I do think it's something that we should address in the future. But also, I understand that we are following the law here, and that we have to be aware of any problems that might arise. And I'm sure the chief will certainly help with anything that might arise as far as disorderly conduct. But I certainly, certainly do understand some of the issues on the South Side, absolutely.
Thank you all very much.
No, it's fine. Go ahead.
We have a Michael Vick. Vicker wants to introduce your company, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Come right up. Good to have you here.
Thank you very much. Mayor, Commissioner, thank you very much for the opportunity. I recognize the fact that you have executive session, so I'll keep it very brief. I'm the manager of Kentucky Operations for Bernard and Lock Mueller and Associates. We are a full-service engineering firm, founded as a planning organization in nineteen eighty. We are now over a hundred and eighty employees strong with six branch offices in the Midwest, including Kentucky. If you, I know as a Kentuckian, you don't consider Kentucky the Midwest, but we have decided to reestablish ourselves in the Kentucky market, Western Kentucky, to service the transportation cabinet and also a core group of municipal clients. We view long-term goals of our clients as our priority, serving them. And like I said, I just want to introduce myself, let you know we'll be around and welcome the opportunity to meet with the city manager and you all in a different forum, and let you know what we're capable of doing.
Great.
Our office is located in Madisonville to service all of Western Kentucky in the short term, and we'll see where it takes us in the next few years.
Great. Decide whether you need to make a permanent location...
We'll see who our core clientele are, and we'll relocate to where those needs are.
Smart move.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you. I think I have a gentleman here from Calvert City on a workman's comp case. Herbert Tries? Travis? Oh, wait, okay, you're, okay, come on up. This, I want to restate the policy of the city commission. We are all very aware of the sick workers' claims out at the plant, and we all sympathize for those sick workers. As I've said several times, is that this body of people have City of Paducah responsibilities. We have a lot on our plate that we're trying to resolve. Our city attorneys have said repeatedly that the sick workers' claims need to be resolved with the federal government. There is really nothing that local government, county government, or state, or federal government can do about this. It has to be done on the federal level. I have been to Washington many times, and so have other people sitting up here, and if expressed a desire by Senator McConnell, Congressman Whitfield, Senator Paul, that we support the sick workers. And so that is what we will continue to do. And the correct thing for these sick workers to do is to work the case with the people that can resolve the problem. And those people are the federal government and all the senators and legislators that I have just named. For us to take time out of things, we're going into executive session, we've got, for us to take time to listen to people that we cannot help, is not good use of our time. Now, I have, there are, I believe, three people here that want to comment, and I've agreed to give each one of them two minutes. So if you will, go ahead, and it's, we're glad to have you here tonight.
Thank you. I'm Evelyn Jofford. I've hired Gary to help me because I'm not a good spokesman, I'm not really wanting to be here right now. But I've seen sympathy in all of you, and you had someone here in this very place speaking on behalf of other people. That's what Gary has been to me. That's what he's assigned to me for. I've asked him to speak for me, and if I understand it right, you've denied him that right to speak for me tonight. That's why I'm in this awkward position.
All right. Well, you're doing fine. You're doing fine.
Excuse me. And, you know, I expected help from you people, the way that you've helped these other groups. Because you're, the City of Paducah, you know that these workers have been saturated in those chemicals at the plant over and over again. I'm sure it's happened in your lives, in my life. My husband died, these others, we all have stories. We all have stories. They're real, honest-to-God, down-to-earth stories, but it's all from, stems from the chemical plant out there. They were saturated in chemicals. Nothing has been done about, from the DOL, nothing has been done. We couldn't get them to do anything. That's why I've got Gary to help me. He's my spokesman, supposed to be, but you denied him the right here tonight to speak for me. I don't understand. I'll never understand why you won't do that. Is my two minutes up?
Well, do you have more to say?
I have a lot more I could say, I guess.
Well...
But this is, I don't understand why you folks won't help us the way you do other people. They come here one right after another tonight, and you've listened to them?
We help people, we help people that are, that we can help, that we have something to say. We can determine whether a church needs to be located in a certain location. That's what we do. We can determine if laws are broken inside the city. That's what we do. We can be sympathetic, but we cannot, we cannot change it.
Can you go to Senator McConnell and those other...
And we have done that. I just, I told you that we have done that, on your behalf. We're not going to, we're not going to talk specifically about an individual case. We have said...
How come you won't listen to Gary, though? How come you won't listen to him and what he has to say?
All right. You're doing a fine job. You're doing a great job of speaking. So we appreciate you coming tonight, and we wish you all the luck in trying to get your case heard and settled. Thank you.
So you're saying you just don't have time for it?
Yeah.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that.
Well, that's, is that what you understood? You know, that's what you said, you just don't, y'all don't have time for it. Exactly.
I'm saying that the federal government will decide your case, not to state, not to county, not to city. We have no, we have no pull other than to give those representatives...
You have no authority whatsoever over USEC.
We do not have any authority over USEC.
No zoning or nothing?
No zoning, it's all in the county.
In other words, they can dominate the ground all they want to, and y'all...
They, and the federal environmental people will have to address that. Yes, sir. Come in.
I didn't know I was going to be speaking tonight. My name's George Johnson. I spent thirteen years at the plant as a, started as a frontline supervisor and then became a supervisor over the waste management field operation and helped develop a lot of the procedures that were utilized out there. Received three President's Awards in the process. Gary wanted me to give you these emails, and just the reason these people are so frustrated, and I can understand it very well. I was at the meeting a couple of months ago when you said you would meet with this lady, that y'all would have a separate meeting, and to my knowledge, that's never occurred. But they're crying for help. And the reason is, this email contains several emails that were written to our federal officials on their behalf, and they were returned unread. That's the problem. Nobody wants to listen to this. The people in high-up positions do not want this exposed because it will expose some very, very serious issues for their part, and it would shut that facility down. We've got a number of people in this community that have sacrificed their lives, and I knew several of them, I had some of them work for me, I worked with a lot of them. They were brilliant people. They're no longer here because their brains were eaten up by cancer, or they had lung cancers, many other, and the percentage rates, even though they have success ratios that are in double digits, those people are dead. And they died at the time they were ready to retire. So the point, yeah, let me pass these out so you can see that, that before the attempt was made to contact our federal officials, and it just falls on deaf ears. And what's happening is, we're waiting for these people to die so that we don't have to pay them. And that's the sadness of our government. I've testified before a federal criminal grand jury, and I understand how this thing operates really well because after I testified, they shut down the testimony, and they charged them a million dollars, but they sealed the file up to never be read again. Because what they've done to this community is a sin, it's a travesty. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, George. That concludes our meeting. Okay, that concludes our meeting, so Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. Future sale or acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate is permitted by KRS 61.8101B, and a specific proposal by a business entity where a public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.8101G.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.